The instructions is from the, it's very sensitive. Read this part.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Planning Commission of May ninth, 2023. Can we have a real call?
Commissioner Fields. President, Commissioner Ching.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ostrowski. Commissioner Kamkar.
Here.
Commissioner Craig.
Here.
Vice Chair Sutter.
There.
Chair Buckbinder absent.
Okay, thank you. By ways of introduction, my name is Alan Zissler. I'm Vice Chair of the Planning Commission and will be, tonight will be Acting Chair of the Commission in absence of Chair Adam Buckbinder. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes of April 11th and April 25th? Any corrections? No? Do I have a motion?
I'll move approval of the minutes of both April 11th and April 25th.
Second. Please second. Second. Real call vote?
Commissioner Fields.
Aye.
Commissioner Ching.
Aye.
Commissioner Ostrowski. Commissioner Kamkar.
Aye.
Commissioner Craig.
Aye.
Acting Chair Sutter.
Aye.
Director Eastwood. Any communications, agenda modifications, postponements to notify the commission?
Either Acting Chairs, this is.
Okay, thank you. This is the point of meeting where any member of the public may address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda. You may speak up to five minutes, but the Planning Commission may not take any action today. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Anyone online? Okay. We'll close that part. Okay, before we start the regular agenda items, provide some information to those joining us this evening and how we will be conducting the meeting for each item. Each item, I'll first introduce the item and then ask for staff presentation, after which we may have some questions for staff. After that, we will open the public hearing and first ask the applicant to speak if applicable, followed by any other members of the public. We'll first have any public speakers physically present and then anyone attending via Zoom. Members of the Planning Commission may have questions for the applicant or any of the public speakers. Once we've received our public testimony, we'll close the public hearing and the commission will then have discussion and a motion and decision based on the nature of the item. Before we start on the items, do any of the commissioners have any disclosures regarding any of the items on the agenda tonight? Okay, let's begin with first item. First item is PLN 2023-71, 2024-2028 Capital Improvement Plan. Public hearing to consider the City of Campbell, 2024-2028 Capital Improvement Plan, CIP for citywide projects for consistency with the Campbell General Plan. Staff is recommending that the project be deemed exempt under CEQA. Project planner is Daniel Fama, Senior Planner, and the tentative council meeting date is May 16th, 2023. Mr. Fama. I'm sorry, let me just say recommended actions to adopt the resolution finding that the proposed capital improvement plan is consistent with the capital general, Campbell General Plan.
Thank you, good evening. Yes, the California Government Code requires that the city's planning agency, in this particular case, the Planning Commission, review the annual capital improvement plan and determine that it is consistent with the Campbell General Plan prior to consideration and adoption by the city council. So, a staff report that is included in your packet identifies 18 new projects in this year's CIP and identifies the specific general plan policies and strategies in which staff believes it's, those individual projects are consistent with. Let me quickly show my screen. Highlight, highlight those. Most of these are reoccurring activities are classified as new since they are in fiscal year. We do have cities traffic engineer, excuse me, city engineer as well as our finance director here should the commission have any questions regarding the particular projects or their financial implications. Note, this is the last time that we will be reviewing the CIP under the current general plan. For next year, we'll be reviewing those projects under the newly adopted 2040 general plan. With that, I will take any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
We'll start, start going on the left. Yeah, Daniel, so you mentioned that this is the last review with the old general plan, but did you guys see any issues with, would there be any issues with the new general plan? Projects or off the top of your head?
Unfortunately, that will also be based on next year's CIP projects. But you'll notice in the packet, you do have individual project sheets and these project sheets actually identify the strategic plan goals and objectives. We are hoping that next year we can incorporate general plan policies and strategies into those project sheets. Have a formal, succinct approach to this process.
Yeah, I like those individual projects, so that is good. The report also mentioned that the bike and pedestrian infrastructure funding was insufficient. So, is the city hoping to get grants to make up for insufficient funding or?
Well, I will defer that question to my colleagues. Will, are you online? Can you hear us?
I am, but I, I wasn't sure if that question was for me or for Amy. Could you, a, 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 a hot question?
Like catch that, okay, keep the question. Yeah, yeah, well, I was just asking, the report notes that the bike and pedestrian infrastructure funding is insufficient. And I didn't know how the city plans to make it sufficient.
Um, well, we, we do, can, can, continue to look, look for grants. We will certainly attempt to see what we're, what we're, what we're, what we're able to get either, either, either from the state or the state or the top bed. We, 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 we do also, we do also include a certain, a certain degree of bike and ped, um, uh, bike and, bike and ped improvements under our, 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 our street maintenance program. So, for, for any time that we, overall, a street, we put down a, 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 a new, a, a, a new, uh, I, a new, uh, overlay over the street. We, we will, we will also, to the extent that we can, also address, also address bike and ped. Uh, when we can. So, I'll, 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 I'll also, I'll also defer a bit to, uh, I'll also defer a bit to, 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 to Amy. If, if you're able to give any additional details as well.
Thanks, well, sure. So, although there isn't an increase, you know, for your question, Commissioner, as we embark on projects such as our street maintenance projects, we do include bicycle components. So, every opportunity that we get with our projects where, you know, it allows us to include bicycle lanes and such, we do try to do that. So, an example is the Winchester resurfacing project that we did, we included bike facilities. And upcoming with the annual street maintenance that we are compiling four years of funding, it will be on Hamilton. The entire corridor from western city limit to eastern city limit. And when we do that, it isn't just a pavement project, but we're gonna include what we call complete streets elements, which will include bicycle lanes and we're looking at green bike lanes with, with protective buffers where areas where we can.
Okay, no, no, I, I just, you know, I noticed since we pointed out that in this one area, the funding was insufficient, but, so that leads me to, I got two more questions real quick is, since we pointed out that this one project, the funding is insufficient, does that mean that for every other project, we have funding already in place?
Well, particularly, I mean, you were just talking about bicycle pedestrians.
No, no, I'm talking about all, maybe this is for Daniel, so all the projects that we're going over. We just pointed out the one project that doesn't, has insufficient funding, but that leads me to think that all the other projects have sufficient funding. That's my question. Not, not off the top of your.
Will, do you maybe want to explain the, the nature of the CIP? How it plans out for future projects?
I can, I can. Um, so, under, under, under the, uh, sea, under the sea I peed, there, 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 there are, there are a lot of, of, of projects. They, they all, they all, they all get their funds from either, uh, uh, grants, um, that, that may come from the state, that may come from the hotbed. But, they also, they also can come from, uh, 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 home fees as well. The, the key thing is, is, is that for any, for any one, a CIP, a project, it, it can be, it can be paid, it can be paid for in a, in a, in a, in a number of federal ways. To the extent that we can, we attempt to a full, a full, a fully, of, of, while we attempt to inch, ensure upfront that we're able to fully pay for the entire, the entire, like, entire, the entire, um, amount of project that, that could stretch one to two, up, up, uh, to, 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 to five years or more. But that's some, not, in that case, all, all, uh, time. There, there are, there are some cases, um, that we do a certain, a certain, a certain, a certain amount of product upfront, with what, with what, with whatever funds that we're able to obtain. I'm sure. But it, we, we, we also put in, put in, put into the, into the CIP, the, the, the full expected like, like, like cost of the, of a project over the whole CIP term. So that we're also able to identify whether or, or, or not, we've, we've secured enough, enough funding to cover the whole cost of the budget. Or, or if we, we also need to seek either additional external funds, but also our own being, uh, uh, external funds. So, typically, it, it, it will be a fully, well, it will be a fully, well, a fully, well, on the project, but that's not the case all the time, bro.
Okay, no, thanks. Well, I know it's an ongoing thing. I was just, just curious if we saw any necessarily any particular holes. It sounds like, like it's ongoing and we'll see what happens. I just have one, one final question and I know I'm getting off the topic of the general, you know, compatibility with the general plan, but I just had, have to ask this one because, because we just went through so much on this. So, one item in, one of the new 18 projects is a corporation yard roof replacement. And it's a pretty big project for Campbell, 2.3 million. And of course, we've just been talking about possibly, potentially, ideally, perhaps moving the corporate yard to technology park. So, are we gonna hold off on this project until we're sure about that issue or, or, because I can't imagine that we'd want to spend money on a, 2.3 million on a new roof when that issue is outstanding?
Um, yeah, I, I, correct. Um, we, we occur, we, we currently, we currently show it under the, under the proposed CIP. But it's, it's, it's also, it's also on hold, until we're able to, uh, uh, determine whether or not the, whether or not the torque guard will stay at the same, the same location. If it, if it, if it were to move elsewhere, we, we would take off the current, uh, 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 project, then put, uh, put, uh, the hop-ons elsewhere.
Yeah, thanks. Good to hear. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is regarding lawn rebate. I know Valley Water has a lawn rebate program and some cities add additional incentive for homeowners that want to change their lawn. Is that covered in the CIP or is that a completely separate?
That would be an entirely different matter.
Okay. Okay, so that was my question. Thank you.
No questions for me. Looks very reasonable and to have a street and bike improvements and improvements to the facilities for the, for the, so. Every, I know questions for me. It's like all important improvements.
Yeah, likewise, my, my question about the roofing. I think roofing is only about near 18 or 55,000 after that 2, 2.3 million, so it was, it's to the corporate yard. I think most of it was to, could be mistaken. No, no questions.
Commissioner? I think my only question on accessibility is there's ramps in the ADA transition plan, like, when those are built in, is the building considered accessible in all the important ways? Just like check all the boxes, because it didn't seem like large expenditures. Just was curious about like the overall accessibility to public facilities.
So, we have our annual accessibility ramps that we built throughout the city. And those are really focused on curbs that are non-compliant or there are locations where there are missing ramps. That's where we put them in. And we also, in addition to that line item, when we build our street maintenance projects, we spend almost 30% of our street maintenance budget to address our areas where we lack in accessibility, so programs being done.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, actually, others have covered my, my questions. My only question is, just to be sure I understand, the, the, the city council has reviewed this in detail on more than one occasion. Is that correct?
They reviewed the budget in a more informal setting. They have not formally considered the budget yet. So, the Planning Commission does need to make that determination prior to their formal consideration.
I see. Okay. Well, I actually have no questions since getting into the items is not part of this, so I'm, I'm true with my comments, so. So, I guess we can open it up, close question and open it up for public comments. Is there anybody here that has a public? Obviously not late in, in, in the chamber, but are there anybody outside the chamber? No? Okay, so I'll close the opposed public comment and I'll open it back up for commissioners just for any final comments. And I can have, everything looks to, to, consistent with the general plan, so I think it's fine.
Kamkar?
I share that view as well, you know, I couldn't think, but actually, I do, I did think of something, but I'm not sure if this is, it's for this year, maybe next year hopefully is. Electric car charging, you know, I wish we would address that in our public spaces to encourage more adoption of electric cars. to encourage more adoption of electric cars. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Uh, yes, I'm supportive of, uh, of the proposal and the budget.
Likewise. Same here. Uh, I think in particular with skate park updates, it's nice because Campbell's super nice. Everything's well maintained. That skate park's beat. Uh, and I drive by it all the time. And so I was excited to see that on the list. It seems like that kind of brings everything up to the standard we have elsewhere in the town.
And yes, I, uh, to my best knowledge, uh, I, I, I'm going to, to, uh, assume that, uh, we're inconsistent with the general plan. I actually, uh, agree with, uh, Commissioner, that it was nice to see that, uh, the skate park would be updated. So, uh, with that said, um, I'm going to close that session and
We need a, a motion and a resolution.
Right, right. So do we have, uh, if somebody wants to give a motion for this? Uh, I'm happy to make a motion that the, uh, Campbell Planning Commission adopted resolution, reference attachment one, finding that the proposed capital improvement plan is consistent with the Campbell general plan. Second? Second? What's your new father?
We have to go to slow motion replay.
Uh, can we have the voice vote?
Commissioner Fields?
Hi.
Commissioner Chain?
Hi.
Commissioner Strazinski?
Hi.
Commissioner Camp Car?
Hi.
Commissioner Pray? Acting Chair Sizer?
Hi. Okay. Item, item two. Okay, item two, T L N two oh two two dash forty-four fifty-five seventy East Hamilton Avenue. Uh, this is, uh, this is about, uh, public hearing to consider request of A U energy for property located at five seventy East Hamilton Avenue to allow reconstruction of a Shell service station with expanded convenience store, including, uh, offsite alcohol beverage sales. It drives through Car Wash in twenty-four operational hours. Um, the application under consideration includes a conditional use permit with cited architectural review. Staff is recommending this item be D D statutorily, uh, exempt under sequel planning commission action is final, must appeal the rights to city clerk within ten calendar days. Um, the recommended action here is to continue this item to a planning commission meeting of June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Yes, the, uh, this item was scheduled for this evening. Uh, however, the business owner indicated he will be out of country and requested a continuance. So we are requesting the commission, uh, open the public hearing and continue to the meeting of June twenty-seventh.
Okay. Do we need to go through all the, are, are there, are, um, are there any, um, are there any questions from commissioners? Okay, um, I'll, I'll ask if there's any questions from, uh, the public. Nope. Do I have a motion, uh, to con- continue deciding?
I'll make a motion to continue consideration of this item at the regular planning commission meeting of June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Second? Second by Commissioner Camp Car? Uh, voice vote?
Commissioner Fields?
Hi.
Commissioner Chain?
Hi.
Commissioner Strazinski?
Hi.
Commissioner Camp Car?
Hi.
Commissioner Pray?
Hi.
Acting Chair Sizer?
Hi. Okay, it's making it easy on me tonight. So, uh, report of the community development director.
Yes.
Director Eastwood?
I'll have a few comments and I'll let you get on with the rest of the evening. So, uh, first off, uh, next commission meeting, we have an unusual situation where both the chair and the vice chair will be absent. So we're gonna, uh, talk a bit with our city clerk on protocols. And so you're not surprised the protocol will be when the rest of you, I hope, attends, is, uh, Ken, Ken or myself will actually open the meeting. And we will ask you to nominate a chair to run the meeting just for that. So it's an usual situation, usually not too absent. That means every blue move, but for the procedures of the planning commission, uh, you'll just have to nominate someone to, to run the meeting, uh, for next one. So that's not surprise. So that's number one. Uh, number two, uh, you might have seen a little bit of look and feel on the planning commission agenda. Uh, so, uh, I just want to call your attention to that. Uh, the format is a little different. We cleaned it up, modernized it. And then in coordination with, uh, Chair Buckbinder, Acting Chair Sizer, uh, we did put in some expectations on language for public speakers that mimics what the city council has. Generally, public speakers get two minutes. If you're an applicant, you have five minutes. And if you're an applicant, you speak five minutes. Public speaker speak, you actually have the opportunity to come back at the end for rebuttal or to, to address any issues they came up with. So just sets clear expectations and follows the procedures of the council. So we'll see that again here in general. Uh, number three, uh, the American Planning Association California announced they have a fall conference. It's in the beautiful city of Fresno. Uh, put those words together. So, uh, it's scheduled for September sixteen to nineteen. Uh, no requests to you today. Ken and I will reach back out to you. We got a month or two to sort of see who can attend and try and get some hotels booked. Uh, I know last time, I'm sure, uh, Camp Car attended and, and probably can attest that there's a lot of good knowledge there. So I strongly advocate, uh, to come out if you're available and knock to Fresno, uh, for the contents and the education of the A P accomplishments. Uh, last but not least, I included in your package, uh, newly adopted, uh, code of conduct. So this was discussed, uh, last year before the commission, a draft code of conduct, uh, that the council directed, uh, staff prepare. Uh, the address is perceived conflicts of interest, not direct financial conflict of interest, but potential conflicts of interest when you're affiliated with the advocacy organization or another organization that is in the business that might come or is coming before the city. Uh, so that came to you last year. You had a lot of questions, uh, on that, that then went to the city council. City council had two meetings to deliberate on it. Uh, they asked a lot of questions similar to questions the commission had. On March twenty-first, they adopted the code of conduct, uh, including your packets and some due times as a clerk. Just want to give you a heads up. We'll reach back out to you and, and ask you to sign the code of conduct. Happy to entertain some, some questions on that if I can, uh, but, but generally, uh, for most of those, the city clerk, they also have the city attorney here if you have questions. And that's my report. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Mr. Camp Car?
So, uh, I do have a question. Um, the, uh, the first item that you discussed, you said that the next meeting?
Yes.
We're gonna, uh, vote to select a chair? Uh, can you please explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so pretend if it's the, the end of the, uh, year and you have to nominate your new chair. Uh, so basically, you're, you're going through that process for nominating a chair for one meeting only. So if you want to get your chops down and practicing as a
Why is?
Yes. Well, basically, the, the rules are, uh, you've not named a chair for the year. He or she, in this instance, he is not here, uh, in his or her absence, the vice chair, uh, steps in. Uh, this instance, uh, the vice chair is not available and there's no real, uh, rules beyond that on who steps in third beyond. The rest of the commissioners just nominate someone to run the meeting.
Because, okay, because next time, you will not be available. I will not be available. Nice. Makes sense.
Okay, so if you'd like to lobby, uh, go, go ahead. Don't violate the ground act. To run the meeting, the next meeting if you're interested.
At what time that I actually am leaving to go out of the state for this year is, is in two weeks. So, um, beautiful Philadelphia. Um, I, I, I actually have a couple of questions just for information. Uh, does anybody else have any other questions? I'm sorry. Anybody else? Comments, questions? Okay, so I just, things that aren't, uh, about things that have gone on. I noticed all the parklets are gone. So, uh, do you, can you, I'm just curious about what, what, uh, the parklet situation, how that ended up?
Yeah, happy to. Yeah, the, the council did adopt a semi-permanent parklet program, uh, for all businesses that come in and, and apply for, get permits to build a semi-permanent or permanent parklet. City approved, uh, uniform designs and one sort of, everyone making up their own design, and we hired an architect to prepare those designs. City council approved grants to help the business owners up to forty thousand dollars if you came in and applied. City would give you forty thousand dollars to help with construction costs. And the city actually paid for all the designs with parks themselves. Uh, we had nine applicants, uh, businesses apply for parklets and grants in, in total. Uh, at this point, I think we're close to issuing three permits. Likely the first three you'll see are Kitty Blooms, you'll track, uh, flights, and then likely a Keiths. Uh, we anticipate most, uh, of the nine to come and get permits after that. That's the status. Hopefully in the next few months. The deadline to construct and get paid is by September. So we're working with, uh, the restaurants to try and get through the process.
Okay, and, uh, that's good to hear. I thought maybe just nobody took this up on it. Um, the other thing is, is that, um, how do you get an update? You don't have to give it to us tonight, but I'm, I'm the status of the civic center development.
Yeah, this, it does come up before city council a lot. Um, and I know they've had a study session recently, three weeks, three weeks ago. I, I didn't attend, but I know it, it happens to inform the council, especially two new council members on the status. Uh, happy to take any work on getting reports that go on the council from in your packet or just give you links. They are available online.
We did.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's anything on the website to give an update, uh?
Good question. Saturday city engineer left, uh, but I'm, I'm assuming we, I can provide the planning mission links to Sash report something.
It'd be nice to get some way to get an update or without having to, you know, this, this council meeting, we're, we're minutes, I suppose, but I'm just curious because it's like supposed to happen, right?
It's projected to happen. Latest I've heard is, uh, late summer fall.
Okay.
We'll break right.
Anybody else? Going once, twice. I adjourn the meeting at eight oh seven.